Joyce. Apple says it's four P M. So I'll call this meeting, regular meeting of the. For selectmen for December first to order and the first order of business would be the approval of minutes. And other than that small typo, I think Joyce, your. Computers insisting on using the word curve instead of curb. It was from the previous month. But other than that, I didn't have any updates. Anybody else?
On the November seventeenth.
Correct.
Yep, on page three. Opioid settlement funds. The comma really should come before memo, otherwise we're looking at three hundred million to fight a memo. Epidemic comma memo attached.
That's sort of a salient memo.
Good call Rufus, I missed that one.
Otherwise, I didn't see anything too wrong with it.
No, I didn't either.
You good with those two minor fixes, Joyce?
Yes.
Great, I will make a motion to approve the November seventeenth minutes with. Fixes noted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Thank you. Correspondence, we have, we received a letter from Catherine Backrack. And I was able to get follow up on those.
Jean, you have on the, actually on the agenda, the November twenty eighth email from Matt Starr under approval. I didn't know why it was there.
Oh geez, hang on one second. I put it in the wrong place. It's supposed to be a correspondence.
Okay.
Um, so we'll do Catherine's first. And would the board like me to read that? Or do we want to note it? And then I can go over the follow up that I have?
I I've read it. I'm good with follow up.
I read it.
Okay, so um. It, I think the focus was really two issues. One was the, a crosswalk at Swift's Lane. And that actually is in the current phase two plans that was discussed. With the, the streetscape committee. And I believe it's going to be on. The west, I'm sorry, the east side of Swift's Lane. It starts to get. Um, tricky when you get too close to an intersection from, that's from the DOT perspective, so they agreed. And were okay with us having one as long as it was on the far further side of the Swift's Lane. So that is currently. Um, in the plan. And then the regarding the gas station curb cut, so basically each. Side, the South Main Street side and the Maple Street side. Each has two curb cuts. And um, this is from S L R who's doing the engineering and the development of the. The plans for phase two. Um, as we develop the preliminary plans, they'll review the access points and widths and provide a sketch for DOT's review. Then we need to reach out to the property owners. So um. That will be in the coming um, months. That will um, address that. They'll do some sketches. For options and then it has to go to the DOT. And we have to obviously talk to the property owners. So those were the two. Primary issues. Did I miss anything, Catherine?
I think you've covered it.
Okay. So that, you know, it's moving along there in the, in the. The planning stage. S L R is so um. It'll just be, you know, another step in the process.
I think that's very good news.
Great. Uh, the next one was email from Matt Starr. And I did get back to him this morning. On his, the, and everybody was included on that next set of responses. So the. His first question was about the small piece of sidewalk. Between eighty eight and nor eighty eight and ninety North Main, why that remained asphalt. Um, and that was. Um, at the, that was at the direction of the DOT. So the, the crosswalk that's up there. While it's safe, there are. I guess sort of. Steps that we would have to take that would require a lot of work if we were to. Provide a sidewalk all the way up to that, you know, provide the new sidewalk all the way up to that crosswalk. They, and I don't really have the details of what, you know, the DOT standard is as far as. What they require. I know it has something to do with the other side of where you land when you go through a crosswalk. Um, a crosswalk should go to another sidewalk, but early on, the streetscape committee. Discussed putting a sidewalk up that um, western side of North Main Street past the Fife. And it was never included in the plan, so. This, this is something that was discussions many years ago and was decided by the. You know, with the support of the streetscape committee. So that was that, those sort of two pieces that are related. The cones down at um, the corner in front of the Swift Restaurant that is, that are there and will likely be there for the winter. Um, to keep cars from parking there, we will add a couple more cones. I don't know, Rick may have done it today. I've barely. Talked to Ricky. We've both been a little bit busy today. Um, Rick, are you on the call?
I don't see him.
Okay, um, so he's gonna add a couple more cones, so it's obvious that you cannot park anywhere near that corner. And the other was the stormwater, um, the general permit. So he was. He pulled out a uh, statement or phrase from what he thought was the. General permit, but it's actually not from the general permit. So um. As I said in my email back to him, it's actually from the. Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan that Anchor Engineering prepared, not the permit, the part, they're two different documents. We have to have a plan as part of our um, compliance with the general permit. So he quote where he quoted the language was, um, you know, was a bit out of context and it sort of gives you the impression that that. Is that meaning other than mixing of sand and salt together and load out onto trucks, no outdoor manufacturing? Or processing activities are performed onsite. It, it implies that that is a prohibited activity. But it, that's not actually what it, what it is. Um, what it is, it's, is it's a statement that's. Um, it's a general one about the outdoor manufacturing or processing activities at the facility, just as in other subsections of the plan. Um, they just, they're described other activities, processes and practices at the facility, but it's not what is prohibited at the facility. Deep has told us our general permit does not prohibit crushing. Um, of material on a short term basis, as long as it's occasional and conducted by a mobile con, uh, commercial operator. Um, permitted or licensed to contract such, conduct such operations, uses appropriate B M Ps and. Um, that the town cleans of any dust or debris pro, post that crushing um, project. So for instance, Rick is going to have hire one of these contractors to come and crush. Some of the materials that are there, so he can then do some road resurfacing works, work in North Kent and Scotty Cook Road and other dirt roads in town. So it's not a prohibited, that statement was. Just sort of a misunderstanding, I guess, on his part. So that's that one. Ready, public comment. I'm gonna just sort of scan. Oh, we have a, a. Small group today. We'll have another opportunity towards the end. Tax refunds. We have two tax refunds for a total of three hundred and thirty two dollars and fifteen cents.
Move to approve.
Thank you so much. I'll second that. All those in favor?
I, I.
Thank you. Um, new business, we have none, old business, uh, that seven point one. Uh, Mike wasn't able to make the meeting, so that's, um, there's no report. Uh, the next is seven point two Kathleen Lind Meyer request regarding Maureen Brady. So I had. I had shared at the last meeting that I had a different thought that I wanted to talk to Kathleen about. Um, I, we were able to have a conversation and um. So in reading the document that she shared with you all, that. Basically, sort of gives a, a bio or it's more. There's, I, it's, it's more important than a bio. It's sort of a, you know, her, her career here. Um, as a public servant in our town. And she was the first selectman um, during the development and building of the Kent Town Hall. Among other things, and um. In reading, rereading that document a number of times. Um, it sort of came to me that what we really should be doing is um, dedicating the town hall to her. So I have a resolution that I have written up based on that document. That I can put on a screen share. Need to find it. Alrighty, everybody see that? Make it a little bit bigger. So this basically was, I put this together based on that um, timeline that Maureen provided. And it, it lays out her accomplishments. Um, what, you know, her, her length of time in service, which is over forty years, that continues to today as a registrar of voters. And um. Talks about her. History making um. Election as the first uh, woman elected to the highest office in Kent. And I did make mention of the headlines that she made for this sort of pioneering moment. In the New York Times and Vanity Fair and the story that was run over. About the um, the town run by women. And then went on to talk about specifically her leadership role as the first selectman. Um, and her sort of salient moments. For us as public servants, coming up, developing that first. Um, local emergency operations plan with Bob Soul back when it was civil preparedness. Um, changing from, there was a big state regulatory change with what towns had to do as far as their um. The public health and like the sanitation and everything. And so she was the one who contracted to. Create up, to add us as members of the Toronto Health Department, which was a big game changer. Um, she also fended off a move by Union Carbide to relocate their headquarters to a piece of land in North Kent. Um, so worked with um, planning and zoning. And secured a lot of grant funding for a bunch of different um, projects and um, surveys that. Saved the taxpayers a lot of money and, and enabled projects to happen that may not have been able to happen had she not been able to get that grant money. Um, it, and it really came through to me that she was a builder of relationships and partnerships, so I wanted to highlight that. And her um, continuing to carry on that selectmen's advisory committee that um, was talked about. And that. Really pulled together. Um, board chairs, but the, the school um, heads of school and also members of the general community. Um, to talk about upcoming issues and. Being able to take those issues to the Board of Selectmen or out to planning and zoning so that there was this sort of um. She already had that constituency and that. Partnership built and was able to take things to um, the boards in a, in a more effective way early on. Um, and then really the last piece talks about her um. Her role in getting the town hall where I'm sitting right now. Um, developed and built makes me teary. It was um, I, it was very endearing to, to write this up. And, and it's, I think it's also important to talk about the, the people that came before her and the work that she carried on of Bob Ward. And um, you know, the other, the other folks that are mentioned in the resolution. And her um, savvy negotiating with Gordon Casey for the two acres um. Instead of one, so that um, there was plenty of room for the building. And then this is basically what we are resolving. Board of Selectmen um, resolved to dedicate the Kent Town Hall located forty one Ken, Ken Green Boulevard to Maureen Brady. To honor her lifelong commitment to the well being and thoughtful stewardship of our community, her leadership in the pioneering, pioneering. Days of women and leadership roles as an inspiration to all people. Um, to all people of the town and her visionary role in creating a new endearing home for Kent's municipal government. So. If we're ready, I would make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I would like to say this. If possible, um. I mean, this is all great. Uh, I, I, I like, I like the look of this document, um, but. Yeah, I mean. This is a big, um, you know, a, 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 a big move to name town hall after someone, um.
Well, not naming it after her, we're dedicating it to her. So we would have, you know, a small plaque in the lobby um, created.
Um, I, I'd like a little bit to think about it. I think, I mean, yeah, I mean, I, I know we want to do something. I mean, without question, uh, we want to do something and um. You know, if, uh, uh, you know, if this were in the Google Drive, um, you know, to have read before this meeting, um, I, I may have been more. You know, more, more ready to do something, uh, but um, but I'd like to. Put this off until the next time we meet and I'd like to just, just, just look at that document again and, and, and ruminate a little bit, if that's okay with you two.
No, I, uh, this kind of caught me off guard. I mean, I think Maureen. Did a tremendous amount, I think, uh. Maureen. There were several women preceding Maureen. So she wasn't a pioneer in terms of maybe not in town hall, but representing Kent and. The State House, you had. My grandmother in the fifties. Del Eads for many, many years in the Senate, both of them. So. I would like to look at the wording. I am not at all against dedicating. I would, if this was to name the town hall, I'd be dead set against it.
Yeah, it's not.
Anything like that should. Be named after individuals, um. But. Again, I. I agree with Glenn. We need to. Be able to. Look at this, look at it and think about it and the wording and whatnot. So I'm not ready to vote on anything tonight, but I certainly appreciate what Maureen has done. For the town.
Likewise, me, me, me as well. So, um, you know. Does that make sense, Jean?
Yep. I'll send it off to you after the meeting.
Yeah, and then we'll, we'll, we'll take this up at the next meeting. No problem.
Um, the next, make sure I'm in the right place here. Next is the policy and procedure manual and. I know I keep pushing this off, but. Just a lot going on right now. I will. Put it in my docket to give Mike Rose a call and um, have an initial conversation with them to. Come up with. Where we should head next. So I'll. I will commit to getting something back to you guys before the next, well before the next meeting. Yes, um, yeah, Melissa, Melissa, we can put it in the public folder for the meeting, for sure. And then the final piece is the opioid settlement funds allocation discussion. So um, the, there were a number of cog towns, as I said at the last meeting that have um. Spent this funding in a couple of different ways. Um, I just want to find that. What our total is again. Wait one second. That was seventeen meeting, I think. Um, yeah, so, um. We will have approximately a little over eight thousand dollars to spend. Um, and again. Different towns have done different things. Varying from donating. Some of this funding to um, the local EMS so that they can purchase more naloxone. Um, to uh, the regional treatment, um, not for profit. Treatment organizations and um, referral organizations. Um, there's a number of places where we could um, give some of this money to. Um, I, I would like to keep some of the money and use it to. Provide some public training so we can get public naloxone training from the Northwest Corner. Um, prevention network. They will come and provide um, training at no cost to the public. And um, also provide. Um, the public with what they call nar, um, Narcan kits or opioid um, overdose kits that the Department of Public Health. Was giving away. I don't know if they have any now, but it basically has, um, you know, a, a. Single dose of naloxone, which is. Has become publicly available through the, the legislature over the years with the opioid overdose epidemic. Um, and I believe you get a um, CPR breathing mask and gloves. There's, you know, a couple of components to the kits. Um, and I'd also like to. Um, purchase. What are called, they're called nalox boxes. So Rhode Island has been especially. Hard hit by the epidemic and they, their um, disaster medical assistance team, which is a state level asset. Um, partnered with a local non-for-profit in Rhode Island to um. Basically. Give people jobs by design, helping them to create, um, design and fabricate. These boxes and let me put it on a screen share quick so everybody can see. Again, not making any decisions today, just trying to, you know, have the discussion. So these are um. What's happening all over the country is pretty much. Most people know where um, that there are public access AEDs. And um, what's been happening is um, these boxes are now being co-located with the AEDs. So you'll start to see them in, you know, schools and airports and casinos and all over the place. And because the AED program has been such a success. The thinking was there's no reason to put publicly available overdose emergency kits somewhere else, put them where the people know to go for an AED. So they would be co-located um. Here in town hall, um, I think we should have one at the community house. I, I'm looking into a um, one that you could have outdoors to put on the welcome center. These have uh. Alarms on them. They're not connected. To anything, but they do have an audible alarm so that if somebody opens the kit to use it, there would be an audible alarm. Um, so this is one um, one option that I think that we should seriously. Consider for our community. So. That was, that was sort of as far as I've gotten with this. And there's, again, there's no deadlines for the uh, spending the money, so we can continue to have these conversations.
I would. Like to consider. Focusing on, you know, families and individuals who have been affected by. You know, maybe, maybe they've got somebody who's. Struggling to recover or whatever, um, you know, um. I'm. I'm not sure, you know, spending. Money for some of these boxes is. Is actually for our town, the, the right approach, but. I just want to make sure that we, we stay focused on what. Would be the most. Beneficial for the families and individuals who have been affected by. The crisis.
Sure, and there's um, in the, the folder from last month, there was the eligible uses. So we can send that out to you again. Cause it does have, um. There are.
Limitations.
Yeah, and again, it's only eight thousand dollars. Um, it's a long term. Many, many, many year settlement, so we will continue to get some funding, but this. This probably is the biggest bolus that we'll get and then years after it will um, be smaller. But I can send out that document to you all again.
And even if we just purchased one kit, I mean, that's three twenty five, we would have plenty left over for individual families. Um, individuals, so it's not like we would need five, six or seven, you know, strewn about the town, if we have one or two, and one.
Right, and there are, um. There are resources for families and individuals that are already in place for. You know, in, in towns and, you know, it's, it's been a very, very big. Programmatic push for all the way from the feds, obviously, down to local health. Um. But maybe, you know, another thing that we can think about is partnering with one of the regional organizations to um. To do a, you know, some public information sharing, public campaign. So about resources, so to, to your um. Your point Rufus. To connect people to resources and maybe people don't know that there are resources.
Right, or even, even trying to put together. You know. An event in Kent. With. The powers to be. Representatives in Hartford, et cetera, et cetera, to, you know, have a. Um, an event that to, to draw attention to and, and distribute information. Might be something and it wouldn't, certainly wouldn't cost. Use up the whole amount, but.
Right, we did actually have, um, so there's, there's a number of. Organizations and task forces at all different levels and I have to say it was maybe a year ago. Um, we actually had an opioid roundtable in Kent and Johanna Hayes came, um. The lieutenant governor came, no, it was Maria Horn and the lieutenant governor came and ran a um, an opioid uh, roundtable. And it was, it was really interesting because there were um, parents whose, who lost loved ones and um. So they were definitely, you know, they were a big part of the discussion, so it was a pretty amazing um. Opportunity to, to bring, you know, a voice to that. So if that, if that was something, is that sort of what you were thinking, Rufus?
That kind of thing, um, also, you know. Maybe include the schools, uh, you know, because it's that. Generation. Generation which. Starts experimenting and.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's, it's all generations. We, it, what has been found out, um. But I do get, get what you're saying. So we could think about, um, and I can get in touch with, um. I think it was the lieutenant governor that, that headed this. And we can see if, you know, she could help us put together another one since she already has the. You know, thanks Lynn, was nineteen, wow. I can't believe it was that long ago. It felt like it was just. Just last year. Um, so we can explore that some more. And NCPN, the, the Prevention Network, they have, they work. Part of their, the staff for NCPN is um. Our staff at the McCall Center up in Torrington, and so they have a lot of those resources um. At their fingertips as well. So, um. Yeah, I think these are all good ideas. We can continue to. Explore these and, you know, come up with sort of an action plan of what we want to do.
I'm sorry, Jean, did you say when these funds would be available roughly?
Um, they're, they're in our account, in our fund now.
Right now, okay.
Alright, this is great. So we'll, um. I don't know if it'll be on the next agenda, but we'll keep it in the hopper and. We'll come back with, um. Some more, you know, I'll have some conversations and we'll come back with some more ideas and flesh out an action plan in the next couple of months.
Good.
Alrighty. Second round of public comment. Saw the two chat. Comments. Oh, Lynn. Hi Lynn, how are you?
Hi. Good, um, I'm sorry, I must have stepped away because I didn't hear what, why you didn't. I didn't hear you discuss the streetscape committee report. Was it expected and then didn't happen or something?
Um, yeah, there, um, Mike had a conflict. He wasn't going to be able to make the meeting, Mike Gavel, um, so he didn't have, he. Um, didn't put in a report because he wanted to come and give the report.
And is there any update on uh whether or not um SLR is gonna pony up and pay any of the thirty thousand dollars or is, or are we gonna have to eat that?
I'm still in conversations with them about that.
So they, just to be clear, they haven't said no, or it's just a negotiation?
It's just a negotiation. We're. Continuing to talk with them. We still have punch list and there's, there's a, a bunch of other. Pieces and parts that are still moving along, so that's one of the. One of the pieces.
Is there any kind of timeframe of when everything has to be wrapped up? Because I do remember the contractor was on, under a timeframe. Of six months or something like that?
Right, so that was a hundred and eighty day contract for the construction. We do have a couple of things that because the weather got cold really quickly. Will probably need to get. Followed up in the spring, but we'll. Once we get the whole punch list, Mike Doherty was here today and he did a, a walkthrough. Um, of the whole project and so we need to get together on that punch list and see what needs to be. Carried over into the spring when, when the warm weather, um. Is cooperating for us to, to do some asphalt repairs and the, all of the line painting for the. Um, the no parking areas and the um, the crosswalks that'll has to get done. Um, we don't think that that's going to be able to get done this winter either.
So is there an extension because of the weather that's allowed or will it have to be done within the? The hundred and eighty days?
I'm, I don't know, I'm not sure of that detail, but we'll talk to SLR, um, to, just to make sure that, you know, we. Get the project completion that we contracted for, for sure.
Is there, is, and sorry for some of my questions, but does the money get released to the contractor, like the final payment? When everything's done or is it just like incremental or?
So they put in pay recs along the way, but I'm. I'm, I'm not sure how the final pay rec will work, but I'm sure that we will um hold that until the project is completely. Finished, just like you would with, um, you know, if you were building a house and. You know, you're not gonna pay for something that's not completed.
And one final question, um, the uh, the. Phase that has to do with the federal grant, um, that's, you know, South Main Street and out to the east.
Yep.
Yeah, is that starting fairly soon or I noticed some signs went up?
As far as construction.
Hmm, like I, is that, is there a timeframe for that?
Um, it's still in the early planning phases, so SLR is still um. Doing the drawings, the planning drawings, and then it's the back and forth with DOT that um we have to do and then easements and. So. Um, it's really in early planning phases.
So we've already given the bid to SLR?
So the engineering was awarded, right, the design engineering was awarded to SLR that went, that process we did. I want to say. Is that early summer? We did that. We had to, we're, so we've been assigned, basically, it's like a, um. We have a consultant that is assigned through that TAP funding. So we have a direct, single person contact and um we've been meeting with them. It was all through the spring. And they basically walked us through these initial um activities that we needed to do for the um design engineer piece. Um, you know, uh, writing the. The RFP writing, and it's all very, um. Not scripted, but it's, they have a great program where, where. We're given a document and, and they really hold our hand through the process. It's been a, honestly, it's been a great process to be able to go through, so. And that person will stay with us through the entire. All the phases of this next piece of the, um, this phase two of the project.
And will the streetscape committee be involved in any way or is it all on you and this consultant and Rick to coordinate this part of it?
So the, the funding. Says that it has to be um town employees. So once the streetscape phase one is. Wrapped up and the streetscape phase one committee feels it's time for them to wrap up their work and get disbanded. They'll give us their final report and then we'll disband that committee and then it's myself, Rick. Um, and um Barbara, because of the funding piece, um, we work with. The, this consultant, concierge sort of consultant. Going through. Sure. Alrighty. Don't see any other hands up. With that. Apple says it is four thirty eight and I will make a motion to adjourn. Alrighty, thanks, everybody. Stay warm. And have a good night. Oh, I'm sorry, we'll take a, a vote. All those in favor. Thank you. So moved. Have a good night, everybody.